Okay. Okay. Well, she has the opportunity. She's so incredible.
Craig, sorry to make your phone ring on Thursday night. The Pervar.
I showed up at a whim. Did you hear about this?
No.
I showed up at a whim. I'm like, well, I'm on the street. My key fob, is it gonna open the door? It won't. It got me in, but I didn't do anything with the codes. So here it's counting down. Like, oh, boy, this wasn't good. Pervar code.
I call Marine and I'm like, are you breaking into their office this evening?
So we learned in a scenic way, not to...
Not to try.
Seven thirty, yeah.
I can see the next time. Gun's drawn. If we had a newspaper, it can make front page news.
How great. And March, can you imagine? Watergate.
Okay, at six PM, we'll call the meeting in order. We'll begin with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have roll call, please, Marine. Here.
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 Thank you, Marine. First item on our agenda, then, is comments from citizens and delegations. I would just like to note that comments made by the public shall be civil in content and tone. Speakers bear the personal risk if comments made are defamatory, slanderous, or otherwise harmful to another individual. Please keep in mind this meeting of the board open to the public and not a public hearing, and we will limit comments to three minutes. We have one tonight. Anita Jaisason would like to address SEL.
Hi, thanks, everyone. There's something that has really been disturbing me. I've heard about the introduction of social-emotional learning into the curriculum. And I've done research on that actually a year ago. And it's just critical race theory dressed up in prettier words. You know, I have listened to the board talk about the dismal school report cards on proficiency, how our scores keep getting lower and lower every year. And I've compared that to other districts and that, and there's one that kind of stands out to me, the Kowaskam School District. Their scores are in the upper seventies, which is absolutely stellar compared to a lot of the other school districts. And I'm trying to think, what are they doing that the other school districts aren't doing? I found that they're not allowing this type of thing into their, into their schools. They're concentrating on helping these kids learn math, reading, science, history, and letting the parents and the kids think for themselves and to let them develop normally instead of telling them what to think, instead of how to think. I mean, critical thinking is, seems to be a lost art. I remember growing up that, you know, I was taught to question things, taught to, you know, learn and grow at my own level. Now it seems to be a one-size-fits-all type of thing, where all these kids have to think the same way and not being allowed to be who they are. You know, this social-emotional learning ensures that students end up at the same low level regardless of their hard work and intelligence. Instead of raising the bar, they're lowering the bar so everybody's equal, and that makes no sense to me. Students aren't allowed to shine, and I see slippery slopes going all over the different states where, you know, they're eliminating these programs for kids that can shine, you know, in order to let other students look better. That never made sense to me. It's kind of like a group think. You know, there's no allowance for natural development. The equality of outcome regardless of intelligence or effort is actually an insult to minorities. You know, you see this in the big cities all the time. The minorities aren't doing well because of the way their schools are, so they have to lower all the other students down to that level instead of raising them up. Makes no sense. So how is it appropriate for a public institution funded by we, the taxpayers, who hold a wide range of opinions and ideals, to institutionalize only one set of opinions, which is social-emotional learning? So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, our next item, we have special recognition for two COLF fellowship award winners and a Heart of Wisconsin Gold Leaf Educator of the Year. The COLF Teacher Fellowship Program recognizes and supports teaching excellence and innovation in the state of Wisconsin. Educators are chosen for their superior ability to inspire a love of learning in their students and ability to motivate others and for their leadership and service within and outside the classroom. Wisconsin Rapids Public Schools is fortunate to have the teachers selected to receive this distinguished award, Dustin Anderson. Dustin has been employed at WRPS since August 2005. He's worked as an art teacher at Grove, Grant, Pitch, Central Oaks, Woodside, and Rams. His current art assignment is at Grant, Grove, and Central Oaks. Dustin says his educational philosophy is similar to that of a painting on a canvas. Teaching for the past fifteen years has given him the experience to provide students with a sturdy frame and solid learning environment that supports the whole child. He continues to say, as an art teacher, I'm not only providing them with a wealth of knowledge about art and creative expression, but I must also show them that art connects to the education they are receiving in their classrooms and can be applied to their everyday life. Dustin's list of service to education is long. Some include the District CII Committee, National Art Education Association, and the Wisconsin Art Educator Association. Along with the COLF Award, in 2017 Dustin was selected as a WRPS Educator of the Year. In 2020, he received the honor of being named a Wisconsin Elementary Art Educator of the Year. And in May of 2022, he was recognized by State Superintendent Dr. Jill Underlee as one of five Wisconsin Teachers of the Year. Building Principal Nicole Calto states Dustin has a passion for art and uses it to help students and the community learn and grow. Another principal, Tina Wallner, states Mr. Anderson not only works hard to engage families and students, but is also eager to play a role in supporting and engaging his colleagues and community members. He offers art classes to adults both at school and community level. This helps build a positive culture among staff. His clear and patient communication skills support all of his art students, which include children, parents, and colleagues. Dustin, congratulations on receiving the COLF Fellowship and Wisconsin Teacher of the Year Award. We're proud to have you and thankful for the positive impact you have each day on students. This certificate of recognition is presented to Dustin Anderson in recognition of receiving the Wisconsin 2023 Teacher of the Year Award, the 2022 COLF Fellowship Award, and for the positive difference you make each day in the lives of students. Congratulations. We're proud of your efforts. Anything you'd like to say? Floor is yours.
Thank you so much. I'm excited for the next year to see where this takes me, but I just love working here and love teaching.
Thank you for the difference you make. Next up, Kelly Look. Hi, Kelly.
Super embarrassing. I don't like this at all.
All right, well, we'll keep it brief.
Keep it short.
Okay, Kelly Look has been working as a first-grade teacher at Washington Elementary since August 2014. Prior to starting at WRPS, Kelly worked for the Stevens Point, Shawno, and Pittsville School Districts. She feels every child has a strong desire to learn, but first they must feel welcome and safe. Kelly finds ways to connect with every child that steps into her classroom. She lives by the following quote, "If a child can't learn the way we teach, maybe we should teach the way they learn." Creating lifelong learners is her ultimate goal, as well as showing students what it means to be responsible and respectful citizens. She's a positive role model in her first graders' lives. Principal Kelly Schaefer's nomination for Kelly stated, "After serving in other communities, Kelly joined our school eight years ago and is clearly making an impact. Kelly is the epitome of what an educator should be for her students and families. When you walk into her first-grade classroom, it is clear that every child matters, every family is welcome, and every child is learning." Ms. Schaefer continues to say Kelly simply makes everything she is a part of better, all while putting others at ease by sharing a positive outlook. Kelly, a busy mom of four, is the first-grade team leader for our district and a member of the District Quality Educator Committee. She has contributed as a leader and organizer of children's education and events in her church, as well as being a booster club board member for basketball, skating, and softball. She is described as a person of strong faith and integrity, and her efforts with our students was rewarded in 2020 when Kelly was recognized as a WRPS Educator of the Year. Congratulations on your COLF Fellowship Award, Kelly. We appreciate everything that you do for our students and our school community. And this is our certificate of recognition presented to Kelly Look in recognition of receiving the 2022 COLF Fellowship Award, which showcases exceptional teaching and talent and for the positive difference you make each day in the lives of our students. Congratulations. We're proud of your efforts. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm not a public speaker, so thank you.
Next, Jeremy Radke. If you'd please step forward. Hi, Jeremy. Okay, the Heart of Wisconsin's Golden Leaf Educator and Professional Staff of the Year Award Program promotes community awareness of the quality of education in our region and showcases exceptional talent. This year, in its inaugural program, WRPS Agriculture Teacher Jeremy Radke was selected to receive the distinguished honor as Educator of the Year. Jeremy has been employed by the district since 2014. Working with students at Lincoln High School, Jeremy continually looks for ways to innovate the LHS Agriculture Program and engage students, staff members, and the community in the process. In the past five years, Jeremy has updated the Ag Department's course, scope, and sequence to include three dual-credit courses with Mid-State Technical College and two science equivalency courses. These opportunities foster student growth and achievement, and students are able to earn college credits while in high school. Jeremy is also an advisor to the Future Farmers of America Club at LHS. Eric Seiler, career in tech ed coordinator, says of Jeremy, "His willingness to always go the extra mile involves students in every aspect of his program, and his overall positive attitude has resulted in an increase in student participation in FFA." Student enrollment in the agricultural program has nearly doubled since he started. Jeremy, we appreciate your fine efforts in growing the agricultural program at LHS and providing real-world experiences for students that is so beneficial to their growth and learning. Congratulations on receiving the Heart of Wisconsin Golden Leaf Award. We are extremely proud of you. And here is a certificate of recognition presented to Jeremy Radke in recognition of receiving the 2022 Heart of Wisconsin Golden Leaf Award, which showcases exceptional teaching and talent and for the positive difference you make each day in the lives of our students. Congratulations. We're very proud of your efforts. Thank you. Thank you. Would you like to say?
I'm just thankful to be recognized, and I want to thank Eric Seiler for nominating me, all of my colleagues that I work with, and support from my admin, also all the students that I work with to keep my job enjoyable and rewarding, and most importantly, my family for supporting me through a challenging last couple of years, but a lot of positive things as well. So just thankful for the recognition.
Thank you very much. Teachers make a difference each and every day, so thank you for all that each of you do. Okay, next, we will move on to the approval of the minutes.
I move to approve the regular Board of Education meeting minutes of May ninth, 2022, as printed.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve the regular Board of Education meeting minutes of May ninth, 2022, as printed. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. The minutes are approved. We'll move into committee reports. Educational Services, Katie?
Thanks, John. The Educational Services Committee met on June sixth, at six o'clock. We had one public comment. We had a person who spoke on the topic of the social-emotional learning resources purchase being recommended to the committee for approval. And then we had eight actionable items. Does anybody want any of those held out? Okay, so it started with K-5 health curriculum maps. Roxanne Filts, our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, and Amy Andrus, a K-12 Health Education Curriculum Chairperson, presented the proposed curriculum maps for the K-5 health curriculum. The Council for Instructional Improvement has already reviewed the maps and unanimously recommends for them to be approved. There's a timeline which began with the mapping process and includes next steps of piloting the curriculum materials during the 2022-23 school year, with a recommendation to purchase materials anticipated to come before the board in the spring of 2023, followed by implementation in the 2023-24 school year. So with that, the committee recommends and I move to approve the adoption of the proposed K-5 health curriculum maps as presented in Attachment A, beginning with the 2023-24 school year. Next, we have our K-5 physical education acquisition. Since this acquisition is equipment-only, there was no public viewing of the proposed materials. The CII also reviewed the acquisition proposal and unanimously approved recommending the equipment purchases. So the committee recommends and I move to approve the proposed elementary physical education acquisition outlined in Attachment B in the amount of $104,267.07 to be funded through the WRPS referendum curriculum budget. Next, the K-5 English Language Learners Resource Purchase. Elizabeth Van Berkel, our Assistant Director of Pupil Services, provided a recommendation for the purchase of National Geographic Learning's Reach Higher Curriculum Resource Materials for use in the kindergarten through grade-five English Language Learners Program beginning in the 2022-23 school year. Again, the CII unanimously agreed to recommend the program for the board consideration and approval. So with that, the committee recommends and I make a motion to approve the purchase of National Geographic Learning's Reach Higher, both digital and print resources for grades kindergarten through fifth grade at a total cost of $15,412.65 to be paid through the referendum curriculum budget for implementation, beginning with the 2022-23 school year. Next, the K-5 Special Education Reading Resource Reading Mastery Signature Series Purchase. Ms. Van Berkel and Director of Pupil Services Steve Hap presented a proposal to purchase a K-5 Special Education Reading Resource named Reading Mastery Signature Edition. Mr. Hap provided an overview of how Individuals with Disabilities Education Act IDEA requires the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction to determine annually if school districts meet IDEA compliance and results indicators. In its most recent determination, the DPI identified WRPS as earning fourteen out of fourteen compliance indicators, but only seven out of sixteen results indicators. The administration believes adopting the proposed materials will help improve the indicators that are lagging behind. CII reviewed the recommendation in April 2022 and unanimously approved to have the proposal moved on to the board for consideration. So with that, the committee recommends and I make a motion to approve the purchase of the Reading Mastery Signature Edition for grades kindergarten through fifth grade for a total cost of $123,640.77 to be paid from IDEA flow-through dollars for implementation, beginning with the 2022-23 school year. Next, K-5 Social-Emotional Learning Framework Resources Purchase. Sunshine Bruin, our District SEL Coordinator, Tina Wallner, the Principal of Grove Elementary, and Angie Peters, a grade-four teacher at Grant Elementary, presented us with the information the district is seeking a program that is evidence-based, aligns with the collaborative for academic, social, and emotional learning competencies, is age-appropriate, and grade level differentiated, engaging for students, and easy for teachers to access and use. Feedback collected from teachers involved in the pilot revealed overall support for the Move This World curriculum. The CII reviewed the social-emotional learning materials being recommended, and were in unanimous support of purchasing the materials. Committee members raised questions and held discussion around the Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports PBIS Program, another multi-tiered instruction, what assessments in SEL look like, and who performs them, the adult competency aspect of the framework, and the struggles students are facing, which causes a need to address, not only academics, but also social-emotional needs. Superintendent Bruin shared information regarding multi-tiered systems of support already in place, which includes tiers one, two, and three supports, response to intervention, and elements of PBIS. Ms. Hap expressed deep appreciation to the teachers and staff involved in testing out materials, hosting preview material open houses, and spending the time needed to formulate the best recommendation possible. I think we're all in agreement that we appreciate the work that has gone into that. So I would, the committee recommends and I would make a motion to approve the purchase of the Move This World Social and Emotional Learning Framework Resources for grades K-5 for a total cost of $73,120 for three years to be paid with a combination of funds from CCEIS, BMW Grant, and the Get Kids Ahead Grant, and for implementation, beginning with the 2022-23 school year. Next, the Renaissance Learning Purchase Contract for 2022-23. Ms. Filts presented a recommended agreement with Renaissance Learning to purchase Renaissance products, Star Math, Star Reading, and Freckle Math for the 2022-23 school year for a total cost of $47,553.02. Star Math is used to screen students three times per year to determine student progress. Star Reading is used to screen students three times per year in grades two through five to determine student progress. Unfreckle Math helps K-12 teachers differentiate instruction to reach every student at their own level. The committee recommends and I move to approve the contract with Renaissance Learning for the 2022-23 school year in the amount of $47,553.02 to be paid for with the S3 Formula Grant. Now, next, we have the Carl Perkins Grant. The 2022-23 Carl Perkins Grant Application in the amount of $52,587 will focus on gaps found in District CTE Comprehensive Local Needs Assessment in five CTE pathways, agriculture, business and administration, engineering, manufacturing, and family and consumer sciences, food and beverage. The committee recommends and I move to approve the application for the Carl Perkins Grant for the 2022-23 school year in the amount of $52,587. And the Department of Workforce Development CTE Incentive Grant. The Department of Workforce Development CTE Incentive Grant enables WRPS and area businesses and industry to provide apprenticeship opportunities and approved industry-recognized certifications for students. Lincoln High School had seventy-eight 2021 graduates and earned industry-recognized certifications, resulting in an allocation of $62,400. So this amount is determined by the number of these recognitions that we got, and that's an amazing number. So the committee recommends and I make a motion to approve the Department of Workforce Development Grant, Technical Incentive Grant Funds for approximately $62,400.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve ES1 through ES8. Excuse me. We have a roll call, please, Marine.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mrs. Hap?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Crain?
Yes.
Is Dana late?
No.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Bevel?
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to our updates. First, we have an update on the playground equipment at Woodside Elementary. Julia Clark, the Principal of Woodside Elementary, updated the committee on a project being developed by Woodside staff to develop the Woodside Outdoor Campus into an inclusive outdoor play, learning, and activity center. An outdoor classroom would be included as part of the project. The Outdoor Play Learning and Activity Center would provide an opportunity for inclusivity and accessibility for all students and also be a benefit to the community, as it will be open after school, on weekends, and throughout the summer months. The estimated cost for the project to be completed is $1.1 million. The group is in the process of applying for grants from the Legacy Foundation and Noon Hour Rotarians and is also exploring partnerships with local businesses and leaders to obtain donations of time, materials, and services. We also had an update on the changes of the Wisconsin Rapids Area Middle School for the 2022-23 school year. Tracey Gint, the Principal of Rams. We had Jamie Oliver, the Assistant Principal, Bill Oswald, Assistant Principal, Abby Kreisler, the ELA teacher, Diane Gibbs, ELA teacher, and Becky Mishnick, math teacher. They presented information about that they have been working, the Rams staff have been working on a plan to improve school culture and climate and offer more robust programming that will better meet the needs of their students. The goals of the planned changes include, one, strengthen connections and relationships between students, as well as between students and staff; two, enhance family engagement; and three, to better meet students' behavioral needs. Several standing committees will be working throughout the summer to ensure that the plans developed are ready for implementation by August. So, an overview of the plans. We're looking at the implementation of Rams Pride Time. That would be Monday and Tuesday, there would be social-emotional learning activities. Wednesday, Thursday, we would have academic check-ins, and Thursday would be a day for students to participate in clubs and activities. Friday would be a day for students to begin working their own RPT and how fun activities planned to bond as a group. There's also going to be an implementation of the Rams remediation, enrichment, social activities, engagement, teacher collaboration, reset, which will meet once per month. The purpose would be to provide built-in time for remediation and enrichment, offer an incentive for excellent behavior and performance, form a relationship with the community, provide time for students to interact, improve the school climate and culture through fun activities that promote teamwork, cooperation, and school pride, and provide teachers with the essential collaboration time needed. Reset will occur monthly on second early release day. There will also be staff, staff-team-time planning and family engagement planning for things such as anti-bullying information, or they're going to develop a plan for improving family engagement at Rams. There will also be Behavior and Academic Support, Behavior and Academic Support Plan, which will include the BRIDGE, a program which would provide an alternative setting for students with significant behavioral issues. Students will attend unique classrooms, space within the building to develop skills and be provided the necessary supports to help them be more successful and eventually reintegrated back into the regular academic setting. Mr. Oswald will, would assume oversight of the program. The program is intended to be a short-term option for students who need specific supports to be successful, but it is possible that students would remain in the program for longer periods of time if necessary. The collaboration with parents is a key component of the program. Committee members expressed deep appreciation to the Rams staff for their hard work to brainstorm solutions and develop programming that will positively change building climate and culture, as well as more fully meet the needs of district middle school students. Then we had an update on the use of virtual tickets at athletic events. Ron Rasmussen, the Principal of Lincoln High School, provided an update concerning the online ticket sale approach the high school is using for athletic events. All Wisconsin Valley Conference schools are moving toward strictly using the online ticketing system since it is efficient, secure, and helps streamline bookkeeping. The ticket, spigot ticketing platform is being used, is able to grab all athletic event dates entered into the district facility scheduler. One issue that is being rectified specifically for Lincoln is the installation of credit card readers at the admission point of entry rather than only having sales occur strictly through a guest's device. LHS staff has worked with guests who have had no means to purchase an online ticket to ensure that they were still able to attend the event with no one being turned away. Beginning in 2022-23, all tickets, including season passes, will move to online purchasing, with the exception of senior citizen passes. Lastly, a home and away pass is being entertained by Wisconsin Valley Conference schools for possible implementation in the coming year. We had an update on the Educator Effectiveness Grant and Educator Effectiveness Evaluation System fees. Ms. Filts explained that in order to implement the Wisconsin Educator Effectiveness System, the district receives up to $80 per educator to cover the costs associated with system development, training, software, support, resources, and ongoing refinement. In early May, the district received notification of the approval of the Educator Effectiveness Grant in the amount of $32,080 for the period of July. Grant in the amount of thirty-two thousand eighty dollars for the period of July one, twenty-twenty-one, through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. The district also received an invoice from the D P I in the amount of thirty-two thousand eighty dollars to cover Educator Effectiveness Evaluation System fees, which will be paid using the specified E V grant funding. We had an update on student travel. There's an orchestra trip, but that had gotten, that got canceled just prior to the announcement of that, but there was also a Lincoln High School foreign country trip that they're planning for the summer of twenty-twenty-four. Jeanne Kleiman, Art Instructor at L H S, is in the beginning phases of planning a thirteen-day trip to Berlin, Prague, and the Alps through Educational Tours E F. This travel will occur during the summer of twenty-twenty-four. The tour will be geared toward the arts, but any L H S student can attend. As details are finalized, a future update will be provided to the committee. So with that, I make a motion to approve the balance of the committee meeting.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the meeting minutes of the Ed Service Committee of June sixth, twenty-twenty-two. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, the minutes are approved. Thank you, Katie. Now we'll go to Business Services, John.
Thank you, John. Business Services met on Monday, June sixth, and we called a meeting to order at seven-fifty-four. At our meeting, there was no public comment. Out of our meeting, we have six consent agenda items. Did anybody want anything held out? Okay, hearing none. Our first item was Wood Trust Bank Credit Card Limit. The committee recommends and I move approval to increase the Wood Trust Lincoln High School Credit Card Limit from four thousand dollars to ten thousand dollars. This was requested due to the increased number of users, the fact that there's more, more activities at the building in a given time, and the fact that more vendors are going to use, the use of a credit card rather than paper checks. Item E S two, or B S two, excuse me. Motion was, the committee recommends and I move that we enter into a three-year contract with Gagel to purchase Gagel Safety Management Suite and Google Drive archiving for staff at annual cost of twenty-seven thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars, which will be funded from the annual technology support budget. This is our software program that we use to monitor student activity on our Chromebooks and any, any of our computer systems. It also alerts district staff that if there's an issue with some, some email saying where they see something like suicide, or bomb threats, or any type of activity that is not normal, the school district is notified of it so that they can get law enforcement involved if necessary. And in the past, it has provided multiple uses and opportunities for us to prevent things happening in the, in the school district and in the community. B S three is a contract, three-year contract with Canvas. So the committee moves and I recommend that we enter into a three-year contract with Instructure to provide the Canvas L M S and Canvas Studio for a total cost of ninety-seven thousand six hundred and twenty dollars, which will be funded with S R three budget money. This program is used at Lincoln and in Rams, and it's a program that's also used at the U W system schools. It's for planning calendars and a lot of the stuff that the teachers have online and programs for teachers and students to interact with each other. B S four, committee moves and I recommend that we enter a three-year contract with Block S C to purchase Block C Manager Education at an annual cost of twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars to be funded from the annual technology support budget. B S five, this is for classroom sound systems. The committee recommends and I move that we purchase a hundred and twenty audio enhancement Sentinel Classroom Sound Systems from Blum for a total cost of a hundred and forty thousand five hundred dollars, which will be funded from the twenty-two, twenty-three Technology Referendum Budget. These are the devices that the elementary school has been using, and they've outlived their usefulness, and they're also purchasing them for the Rams to use. These allow the teachers to walk around the classroom, and it's a device that they, it's a microphone that kind of goes over their neck, and while they're moving around, they can still talk to the, to the, to the class, and it's heard through the speakers in the classroom, so that even if they're moving in one direction or talking or helping other students, they still, all the students can hear these, these teachers at the same, same tone and level. And then B S six, this is for new monitors. The committee recommends and I move to purchase two hundred Ben Q twenty-four monitors from S H I at a total cost of thirty-five thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars, which will be funded from the twenty-two, twenty-three Technology Referendum Budget. These are monitors that are needed for the classrooms that have computers, that have CAD CAM drawings, the business department that uses the office suites and other locations that, um, the, as Phil told us, the monitors are basically giving up, and, and they're, they're rather old, so this will allow us to upgrade them and get better, better, better energy efficiency out of them as well.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve B S one through B S six. Do we have a roll call, please, Marine?
Mr. Crain?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mr. Bevel?
Yes.
Ms. Dejarle?
Yes.
Mrs. Hett?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Obstand.
And then I have some updates and reports. We had purchases updates, several of them are with the referendum, others are with the wrap-up of the quadplex. And we did have one, our future agenda item will be the annual budget hearing, which will take place Wednesday, June twenty-ninth at six P M. With that, I recommend the approval of the balance of the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the meeting minutes of the Business Service Committee Meeting of June sixth, twenty-twenty-two. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, the minutes are approved. Thank you for the report, John. Move to Personnel Services, Sandy.
Okay. Excuse me, but I am sick from my throat and I have a cough drop in my mouth, so. Business Services met last Monday, June sixth, at seven-fifty-five P M, and from that meeting, we have eighteen consent agenda items, and they are as follows. Number one, the committee recommends and I move to approve the thirteen professional staff appointments. Two, the committee recommends and I move to approve the four support staff appointments. Three, the committee recommends and I move to approve the one non-representative support staff appointment. Four, the committee recommends and I move to approve the three youth apprenticeship support staff appointments. Five, the committee recommends and I move to approve the sixty-six twenty-twenty-two summer professional staff appointments. Six, the committee recommends and I move to approve the seventy twenty-twenty-two summer support staff appointments. Seven, the committee recommends and I move to approve the ten support staff resignations. And some of those, we had two people that signed a contract and decided they were leaving the district before they ever started working, so those are two within those, those ten. Number eight, the committee recommends and I move to approve the one summer school professional staff resignation. That's this coordinator, this coordinator will do it for the first session, and we have somebody else that is going to take it on for the second session. Nine, the committee recommends and I move to approve the fourteen support staff resignations. Ten, the committee recommends and I move to approve the one support staff retirement. Eleven, the committee recommends and I move to approve adding a point four-tenth F T E school psychologist position for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three school year. There's a big increase in referrals, and we have three new school psychologists that are starting next year, so there is an additional part-time school psychologist need, and this position is going to cover the district birth-to-three program. Eleven, the committee recommends and I move to approve, approve adding a point one-seven F T E E L L professional staff position. This is due to a high caseload at the secondary level for additional E L L support, and you think, where would we get a point seven person? We're going to add that on to the German teacher, who is now a point eight-three, so that makes us one F T E, so the position is filled. Thirteen, the committee recommends and I move to approve an increase for the Howe Elementary Behavioral Interventionist Position from three hours a day to five point seven hours a day. Howe is one of our largest elementary schools in the district, and this will help with our Howe is a title-one school, and it'll help meeting some of their goals. Fourteen, the committee recommends and I move to approve adding a security aid position at Rams starting in the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year. Lincoln has two of those. This would be about seven point five-six hours per day, and it'd be a level six position. Fifteen, we're getting there. The committee recommends and I move to approve adding up to ten extended days for the district S E L coordinated position to support buildings, provide training prior to the beginning of the school year, and to analyze data at the end of the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year. Sixteen, the committee recommends and I move to approve hiring an additional full-time speech and language pathologist. Our caseloads are very, very high, and it's difficult to manage and cover it, and when a speech pathologist is absent, if it's a missed session, that has to be made up with that student, so you're going to have to find additional time to make up any time that that's missed. Seventeen, the committee recommends and I move to approve hiring an additional full-time occupational therapist for a total of point five occupational therapists, for a total of four point five F T Es. Just, once again, the number of students requiring these services is going up substantially. Finally, number eighteen, this gets a little tricky, you have to listen to it. The committee recommends and I move to approve increasing the number of certified occupational therapy assistants to three if the occupational therapist, therapist staff F T E is two point five or less, and increasing the number of certified occupational therapy assistants to two if the occupational therapist staff F T E is three point five. We're having very difficult positions, trying to fill these, so if we can't get the full therapists, we're going to get an assistant, and this is just saying, if we can get this, then we'll do this. That's what it is.
Can I, I have a question on the J.
On what?
On J. I just want to know, is that some of the things we got through CISA? Some of the support?
No.
No.
Currently using CISA for.
Microphone.
And they're quite costly through CISA, and they have the same staffing issues everybody else does, so they may not even be able to give us those services, but that was explored.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion, a second, to approve P S one through P S eighteen. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Oh! The minutes for the Professional Services Committee be approved as printed.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the meeting minutes of the Personnel Service Committee Meeting of June sixth, twenty-twenty-two. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, the minutes are approved. Thank you, Sandy. Move on to agenda referrals, information requests. Does anybody have anything this month?
I do.
Go ahead, Sandy.
I, I know when we were in the pandemic, we didn't have a lot of volunteers in our school, and we've kind of relaxed, and perhaps, I don't know how many, last year were involved at, you know, at what positions, at what schools, but can we see what we're going to be doing this coming year with volunteers? If most of our schools are looking for volunteers, or?
Yeah, as we finished last school year, there was some increase in getting back, getting, getting kind of back to normal. We're going to again work with United Way, who does the reading volunteers in classrooms in multiple elementary buildings, because that had dried up a little bit, both because of unwillingness of some of the volunteers to do it, as well as our protocols with COVID. And so, to answer your question, as it stands right now, and fingers crossed that's the way this continues, is yes, so we'll be getting ourselves back to volunteer and other involvement opportunities prior to, like, as similar to prior to the pandemic.
Now, if they volunteered in the past and they've had this time off, do they have to go through a background check again? Or is that, we don't know for sure? Okay. Just curious.
Okay, anything else? If not, we can move on to legislative agenda. Troy, what's new this month?
All right, thank you, John. So the answer to that's not a lot, because the capital is in campaign mode, so I would argue that for the duration of the calendar year, we will not see a ton of substance on that front. But there's just one, one thing to mention this month, and it's, it's a brief one. The WASB resolutions have been updated, and it's now posted online in its entirety, reflecting the resolutions adopted this past January. For Julie's reference, for anybody out there interested, it's W A S B dot org. You can see the resolutions in its, in its entirety, including the January ones recently adopted. Resolutions adopted by the annual delegate assemblies set the policy direction for WASB. Once they are adopted, those resolutions remain in force unless they are amended or repealed. It is encouraged for boards to review these resolutions carefully, because after all, it's meant to be a member-driven process. Each member has an opportunity to put its imprint on WASB's policies, and this begins where boards submit resolutions proposing new language, or changing or repealing existing language, and every year, the resolutions must be submitted by September fifteenth. That's the deadline to get those resolutions in. From there, just a little background, the resolutions are reviewed by the Policy and Resolutions Committee, which is comprised of roughly twenty-five school board members from across the state, representing each region and different type of school district. The delegate assembly is comprised of one representative from each member school board and each CISA Board of Control, as well as the WASB regional directors, and they meet annually at the education convention in January. Each summer, hard copies of the resolution book are mailed to all school board presidents and administrators. Board members selected by their boards to be a delegate will receive their packets in late fall with their official delegate assembly packets. A webpage and video describing the delegate assembly and the resolution process again is available on WASB's legislative blog, so W A S B dot org, and that takes us into July.
All right. Thank you for the report, Troy. Next, we can move on to the bills.
I move that the receipts be noted and the bills paid as printed.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, that the receipts be noted and bills paid as printed. Do we have a roll call, please, Marine?
Mrs. Hett?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Dejarle?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mr. Crain?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Bevel?
Yes.
Thank you, Marine. Now we move on to new business, possible action on employee appointments, resignations, retirement requests. What's new, Brian?
Not a ton. We have a couple replacements, so Sarah Knuth is going to be at Grant, Emily Heil at Washington, and Jody Bodenheimer at Rams. Again, these are all just replacement positions. Leslie Anderson is, Mrs. Hett mentioned earlier, she's going to be taking over the second session as the site coordinator for summer school, and then Ann Sager is a resignation.
Okay. We have a motion to approve.
I would move to recommend approval of the following professional staff appointments. We do an all three of them?
Okay, second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the three professional staff appointments. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I would move to recommend approval of the following professional staff summer school appointment.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the one professional staff summer school appointment. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And I would move to recommend approval of the one following support staff resignation as listed.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the one support staff resignation. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We can move on to discussion and possible action to approve the tentative agreement reached with the W R E A bargaining unit.
So as you know, the committee that has been developed by the board to meet and bargain with the teachers' union met and conducted said bargaining, and the committee's recommendation, and John Crain's, of course, is part of that, as our Sandy Hatton, Julie Dejarle can provide any additional commentary, but the committee's recommendation is that we proceed with a four-point-seven percent wage increase for professional staff, prorated based on F T E, so that would be two thousand two hundred and eighty dollars, I think, is the number? Is that correct, Aaron? Where are you? Is it two, twenty-two eighty?
It is.
It is, okay, thank you. I just, I didn't look at it before the meeting, I apologize. What? Twenty-two eighty-seven, so there you go. Prorated based on F T E, so that would be the recommendation for the board for approval.
And since Act Ten, we don't negotiate with the W R E, we're limited to the C P I that's set by the state. Thought it was a worthwhile meeting, chance to talk a little bit, and they did appreciate the pay raise, and it seems like other districts that have settled have settled at that, and we don't want to run the risk of losing staff members to other districts, so it just seems like the right thing to do.
With that, I would move to approve of the tentative agreement reached with the Wisconsin Rapids Education Association Bargaining Unit.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the tentative agreement reached with the W R E A bargaining unit. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we can move on to discussion and possible action to approve the preliminary twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three district budget to be public. to approve the preliminary twenty-two, twenty-three district budget to be published.
So we can certainly ask Aaron Nelson any questions, our business director, services director. However, but you'll see that, uh, the budget to be published and examined at our budget hearing here coming up in a couple of weeks has been shared with you. Um, apparently it will not stun you to see that at this time, it's identical to this year's. So it's not reflecting any increase or any decrease, um, hence the zero percent. Uh, and I would entertain, or Aaron can entertain any questions regarding said budget for new board members. And then just as a reminder, we'll go through the process of of having the budget hearing and adopting a budget, and then it will likely change. And, um, uh, probably not significantly because we are in the second year of the biennial budget. But there will definitely be changes, I would argue, through the school year in terms of, um, funds, what how some dollars might move around. But in a general sense, um, projecting a zero percent increase or decrease in the budget is not bad territory territory to be in because we're anticipating that property values will continue to rise. That might stagnate a little bit here with the crazy inflation that we've got going, but, um, there hasn't been a huge crash. What that means is is that taxes, if everything remains the way it is now, which again, it'll change slightly. It will likely go down slightly for property taxes, school share of property taxes.
Are there any questions?
I would welcome the preliminary twenty-two, twenty-three district budget to be published.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the preliminary twenty-two, twenty-three district budget to be published. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the last item tonight is update and discussion on district potential transportation service modifications.
Yes, um, on a monthly basis, the transportation invoices come across, come through the business office and, you know, looking at them and we currently, we have thirty-seven secondary routes and twenty-nine primary routes. These are routes that go out and pick up kids, and this is regular at buses every day to get the kids to and from school. Now, this is, when you have that split, so kind of my question was, why is there so many more secondary routes than primary routes? Because it's extremely inefficient to run them that way. And here's why. So when you have a a bus go out and want run a route, we pay two hundred and thirty-nine dollars a day. When we have that second route, it's only an additional thirty-five dollars per day. So on eight routes, really, really expensive routes. So what we did, we're, we worked with our transportation consultant, um, Lynx, and what he suggested that we go out and do a route analysis. Let's take a look at how many kids are riding these buses, the secondary routes and the primary routes. So the the numbers that came back were pretty, I don't know, mind-boggling. It was how few kids that were on these buses. So I'll give you some examples. So for our secondary routes, we have an average of forty-eight kids assigned to each one of those buses. Now, when they did this survey, they just looked at if the kid rode in any given time once, if they rode the week. If they rode just one time, they would, we would count these kids. So on the secondary buses, the average bus had twenty-seven kids per route. That's that's not a lot of kids on on the school bus. And we did the same with the, and that's that's the ma, that was, that's making the assumption all twenty of those, twenty-seven of those kids rode every single time, but it wasn't. That's just, you know, they they rode at least one time during the during the week. So we did the same thing with the primary routes. And the primary routes, there was roughly an average of thirty kids assigned per per bus. You know, actually, if you looked at the roster, there's thirty kids, thirty kids on those buses. Now, keep in mind, these buses are seventy-one capacity buses, they're big buses. So in the AM for the elementary, we have an average of twenty-four kids per bus. And in the PM, it was twenty-eight kids. No, that's, and that's an average. And there again, that's making the assumption every kid, one of those kids. But those twenty-eight kids, on average, rode at least one one time per week. So we have a lot of buses going, leaving, going out on routes every single day and coming in and not a lot of ridership. So we brought in Safeway, we brought in Lammers to discuss this. And they they had them, had them, you know, sat down at the table and they, yes, they agreed that we could do a better job. We can expand these or, you know, be more efficient, try to get things down a little bit further. And I guess the proposal was, after talking with them, what if we just brought it down to thirty-two routes? Thirty-two secondary routes, thirty-two primary routes, and we're being efficient. You're getting that good deal, you're lowering the overall number of routes, but we're being efficient by, you know, getting getting that good deal with that second route. And they were in agreement, they felt that, yes, it was doable, they 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 could do that. So so then we had, we're working with Lynx. They took the number of kids or took these routes, and they have what's called a route optimizer. They just look at the all overall number of kids in the district, the number of secondary kids. It knows where every single one of these kids are located in the district and knows where all the primary kids are located. And the software just optimizing, if if you were to run this at the most efficient route way, how many, how many routes would we need? And, uh, the software came out to, we would need twenty-nine secondary routes. So less than what we we proposed. We were proposing thirty-two, but software is proposing twenty-nine. Now, keep in mind, you're, you know, that's a software doing doing the work and so on, so, you know, so the hu- human beings aren't looking at that. So we have Safeway and Lynx, or not Safeway, and Lammers coming in this week, and they're gonna start working on this as a team. And I've emphasized this a whole while. I don't want to look at this. I want to look at the district, what's most efficient. If we were to look at the district as a whole, I don't wanna look at it, what's most efficient for Lammers. I don't wanna look at what's most efficient for Safeway. Let's just be efficient. And then once these routes are built, then we will look at who's gonna run which route. And, you know, for example, we have, um, Safeway running all the way up to the northwest part of our district. Well, you know, maybe it's better for Lammers to run up to the northwest side of our district just because they're closer to the northwestern side of the district. So we're gonna look at that. So it's gonna, so they're gonna come in and they're gonna look at every route. And, you know, things like, you know, one, things that software can't pick up is, you know, you wanna ideally pick up the kids on the right and drop off on the right. You don't want kids crossing the road or want, you know, as little as possible. Um, you know, the software, you know, you may have kids that live in one attendance area, or if dad lives in one attendance area and the mom lives in another attendance area, they look at all those inconsistencies to take care of that. So that's that's where we're at. And I want the, our, you know, between Lynx, our software, and they've been extremely helpful. But I want Lammers and Safeway to work on this together to, you know, come up with a good routing plan for to get our kids to and from school.
I think part of that, too, you run into, especially at secondary level, you know, when you get high school kids, they're on a route and they're never on the bus because they're driving to school. And, you know, the that bus may be an extra five or ten minutes just for that one student. So that's figured into that route, even though that student may never, the bus may never go there to pick that student up, but it's assigned to that route. And I don't know how you get around that because technically, maybe the car breaks down and the kid needs a ride, which then they would probably call the bus company and say, hey, come pick me up. But that's all figured into the road.
Right.
So you might have a bus that's projected to be sixty kids, that only thirty kids actually will ever get on that bus all year.
Right, right.
That's true. And I'll point out, sorry, before we get too much further into the weeds, the whole point that precipitated this conversation was talking about the possibility of busing kids at the elementary level from point five miles away from the school in greater rather than two miles. So that's honestly what precipitated this conversation, and I just don't wanna lose sight of that. It's, I mean, evaluating our bus routes is great. I'm clearly, that's not an issue in my mind, it's a wise thing to do. But I also wanted to point out, that was the primary impetus for having this conversation, determine whether or not that was relevant or plausible. Because I think it stands to reason that if we can do that, it's probably gonna be a nice benefit for kids in the community, for parents. Uh, but it's not probably something that we're gonna do and then quit doing. Like, if we make the commitment to do it, we're gonna probably keep doing it because it's not gonna be super, um, you know, well-received if you do something like that and then pull it away. So that's, I just don't wanna lose sight of that's ultimately what our goal was. Uh, and again, evaluating routes and and identifying efficiencies is great. But that was the, that's not the debate here, really. I mean, can be, but not the main debate. Debate, the debate was, can we transport elementary kids from point five miles away in greater rather than two miles? That's what started the conversation.
Right, and the there's def- definitely the capacity is there to get get these kids. And many times, the these kids that are between point five and two miles are, if we were to provide that transportation, the expectation would be that they are to walk to a specific point. And so as of, as the elementary routes are out and about, and then as they're coming back into the school, they're just gonna stop and there may be five or ten kids waiting at the specific stop. So the bus isn't really gonna put on any really additional miles. So right now, as it is, we have buses that are less than half-full and just driving right past these neighborhoods and kids that we could provide the service at no additional cost. And I guess my my thought on this whole deal is, I I guess, would you guys have your elementary kid walk one point seven miles to school? I definitely wouldn't. That's a, that's a long way. In winter time, it gets dark late and it's dark early in the the day and or or early in the evening, so it's snow, cold ice, all that type of stuff. So that is a long way for a kid to go.
We've heard from several elementary principals that it is a problem to get some kids to school. And to the point that we were looking at buying vehicles for each building that they could pick up some kids. So hopefully, this would alleviate some of that. Um, you don't see bicycles by schools anymore. You go by a school, even at the end of the school year when the weather's nice, you don't see very many bicycles out in front of schools. So, you know, kids are, a lot of kids are being dropped off by parents, and this could possibly help alleviate some of the congestion with parking if kids can get on a bus rather than mom or dad or caregiver have to drop them off.
And and we do hear that from our elementary principals. It's it's no matter where you go. But yes, there are a lot of parents that are transporting kids. And at bell time, it's quite busy, a lot of traffic. And if we can eliminate some of that parent traffic and have more school buses and less cars, it would help ease the congestion around schools.
So I think if, you know, if you're looking at reducing the routes and just being more efficient, just looking at that, then there would be a money savings, correct?
Yes.
You're reducing the number of routes. You know, we had this, our CPI this year was four point seven. There's a possibility in a year, so it could be seven percent. Our state hasn't been beneficial when it comes to helping the the districts financially. Also, diesel fuel is going out of sight. We don't know where that's gonna be. So the savings could be more than what you're projecting because we don't want the fuel cost to be.
Definitely, we don't know what that would be, but that's definitely, if we did reduce the number of routes here, or the cost for fuel. And the fuel is on, the district pays for the cost of fuel to get the kids back.
So at this time, I'm I'm thinking, you know, if we reduce routes and we have some savings there, that's fine. Because I would rather do that and not increase more busing because there could be a point in time, a year or two, if we're looking at perhaps a four million dollar deficit, where is that gonna come from? That's gonna come from staff. And I want staff, I want teachers in front of those students rather than busing them.
School buses. This would be like what we would propose would be a win-win. Um, if if this follows through as anticipated, yes, one, there will be fewer routes. Two, we would transport the kids between two miles or point five miles and two, two miles.
Because theoretically, that bus is just coming to the school anyway. They're not putting on extra miles, they're just making a stop to pick up. We're filling the bus.
Well, we don't know that for sure, though. We, I mean, you know, we don't know that for sure because those kids right now from two miles.
Yeah, right now, based based on the ridership, when when we have an average of twenty-four kids that actually ride the bus. And keep in mind, we we've we've been working with our our principals and the principal secretaries this last two weeks. Because one thing, we have this whole mess of data. But the 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 data in the in the transportation system is making the assumption that so many kids, if they rode last year, they're gonna rekeep ride again this year, and they're gonna keep rolling forward. So a parent may have signed their kid up for first grade. And since they checked them in first grade, every year that just carries forward. And well, maybe they don't need transportation anymore in sixth grade. Or the ninth grader, when they get their driver's licenses and at in tenth grade or eleventh grade, they they may not need transportation. And so we were, we, our 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 principals really work vigorously at this. And they have actually worked with families. They checked off the kids that they knew for sure that rode the bus. They've, um, they actually went out and reached, um, surveyed the families for the ones that they weren't sure. They actually, for the kids that fell in between this point five and two mile range, they actually surveyed those with knowing that that's not a promised thing at this point. But they surveyed those and they identified, you know, two hundred and thirty-one students would take advantage of transportation if it were provided to them to them. So the data, so a lot of research has taken place.
The other thing I'd point out is that we're gonna have parents that sign their kids up even after doing this, and they, the kids never ride the bus, they ride it once or twice a year. There's not really any way around that because if you are going to, you know, be eligible for transportation, you gotta sign up at the time. And that's not really the the heart of the matter. Because as John Krings mentioned, when you're in practice and there's an emergency or circumstances change, you're gonna have to call the bus company because the route is not accustomed to going to your place, right? Unless it's a group stop here in the city. So there's still some onus on the parents. But we also have to recognize that there are gonna be be people that simply sign up thinking, you never know, I might need it. And we'll have to plan for that and modify routes, which is why we always have changes to routes every school year. Once you start and things get rolling, then there's modifications that were made. And then the second point that I was gonna make was, that's exactly why we're engaging in this, Sandy, so we can answer your question. Right now, on the face of it, uh, if we run less routes but pick up more kids, presumably, we're gonna pay less, right? But we also haven't negotiated the contract, um, cuz I'm guessing there's going to be an increase because everything else is going up. So is it going to be an overall decrease? Is it gonna be about the same? Is it gonna be, I can't even answer that question for you. Uh, we don't know how many routes we're running. So the point of having this update was to get in front of you folks so that you know the things that are in process. The idea that when we have solid numbers and identify what routes are, uh, whether we transport kids from two miles and and up or from a half mile and up for the elementary level, and be able to talk about this in a rational capacity. Because, uh, prior, if we're not doing it in this capacity as we're doing it now, which takes a lot more time, a lot more forethought, and a lot more work, then we just simply add routes, just keep throwing more buses at it, and then you're gonna look at us like we're crazy. So that makes no sense either. So once we put our package together to have an understanding of what we're talking about, then we'll talk about the plausibility of doing and officially, making it official, this point five in greater trip, as well as the number of routes we're running and so forth. And then we're probably gonna talk about busing contract, probably not the same conversation, but in the relative near future. Um, and and, uh, board policy modification because it does say two miles versus point five. But we wanna know what we're talking about first, and that was just this opportunity to give you that heads up. Because if the thought process from the board was like, no, don't do it, then we would not. I mean, that's our, you know, we take our direction from you folks. Um, but there is a need. Uh, we wanna see as many kids get to school as easily as possible. And for whatever reason, they're not biking, and if mom and dad can't get them there, um, a bus is the, probably one of the only or few ways that you can when there isn't kind of city infrastructure for transportation.
If, uh, the the easy, the cheapest way to get to school is to ride the bus. Now, if we can, if we can get more kids who wouldn't go to school, that's a plus. And if we can get them to ride in the most, uh, efficient and cheapest way, that's gotta be a win-win if it works. And I, if you go cautiously, you certainly have my support.
All right, well, thank you, Aaron.
Okay.
Thanks. Uh, looking at the calendar, I'll just note that we did have a tour of the Focus Rapids Family Backpack Operation this evening. I believe they I believe they said they served eighty-three students per week between our elementary buildings, our middle school, and our River Cities High School. For those people that don't know, these are discreet backpacks that are put into students' lockers that have meals for the weekend for families in need. It's rather heartwarming to see that that support is out there, but it's kind of sad to know that it's needed to the extent that it is. We're going to try to put a link through our district webpage, so people can maybe get more information about that program. It's wonderful what they're doing. Troy just reminded me that we have the Dairy Breakfast on Friday, the seventeenth, here in East Junior High Cafeteria at six AM. So if anyone's interested in coming to Dairy Breakfast, that's available. On June twenty-ninth, we have a budget hearing at six PM, and that takes us out into July, but Craig wanted to bring up something four down the road.
Yeah, just real quick. So note that July fifth, which is a Tuesday, is the board, is the committee meeting, pardon me, for July of, of this year, this coming July. And then the eleventh is a regular meeting, but also for next year. So now, not this coming July, but next July. The fourth is on a Tuesday. So kind of putting that Fourth of July holiday into the, the middle of the week territory, which is why, straw poll, real quick, just wanted to identify, would it make more sense to simply have the July, Monday, July tenth be committee meetings, and the seventeenth be the board meeting? So basically, just kicking it back a full week in the month of July, one year from now.
I think so.
Yeah, good idea.
That's what we'll do.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. If nobody has anything else, we're adjourned. Thank you all for coming.